Mike, Billy, and... So, the first thing on the public hearing tonight is to take up the time related to the application to the amendment of the comprehensive plan, map seven, from R2 to commercial, and amend his own map to the same, and the address is 1329 County Road C. It includes 37.89 acre parcel, as well as a 30.17 acre parcel. The property owners are Robert and Chris Klein, and they want me to develop a campground with amendment seats open to the covered. So, we will call people who signed up to speak. You have three minutes, and when your three minutes is up, then we'll move on to the next person. And we want to just make sure that everyone is respectful and does not speak out of turn, and give everyone their... The first person on here is Jamie Proctor.
Sure.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Just stand up and say what it is.
So, I'm kind of new here, but we've owned our land for four years. We've been coming to Big Flats for almost 20 years now. Look, we looked for four years for a perfect spot to retire on. We're on 1389 County Road C, which is not far away. In reading the Town of Big Flats Comprehensive Plan, I came across three major themes: environmental protection, housing, and jobs. The rezoning that is proposed does not improve any of these: no real jobs, not protecting the environment, no housing. In fact, on page 28, goal number three is ensure that all new development in the town is compatible with surrounding, excuse me, uses, and will not negatively impact the environment, resources, or adjoining property values. A campground next to your property makes your property worth zero. Who's going to buy that property? The campground, they're going to make it bigger. It's just going to be a big campground. Please don't let it happen. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask people if they would talk in the next moment, going forward. Leslie, ready?
I was going to use visually, but I only have three minutes. Thanks for allowing me a few minutes to voice my concern. I live on County Road C, directly adjacent to the parcel proposed for a rezon from residential to commercial. I and many of our neighbors are opposed to rezon because it conflicts with our private rural neighborhood and with the county's own comprehensive plan. Everyone's person adjacent to it is against it. I want to stress to you, this is our third time before you, and unfortunately, nothing new has been presented to us. We have submitted verbal and written questions. Some of what we asked were like traffic studies, environmental assessments, and many other questions. We have received no answer. No concrete site plans have been offered to us, as all we have seen is a hand-drawn sketch. We haven't heard how we will manage late-night noise, trespassers. We did not dispute that a campground would work elsewhere, but the parcel it is tied into our area, residential area. Again, this goes against the comprehensive plan. The planning and zoning has said in the past that we have nothing new to say. Of course, we will continue to have the same concerns and ask the same questions we had a few months ago. Increased traffic, increased fire danger, we are already in a high-fire-risk area, crime, trespassing, impact on wildlife, ATV, UTV, and camper congestion, increased need for police, fire, and medical response, which means increasing taxes by doubling the population... by doubling the population. Road infrastructure, the crick, and devaluing our properties. I went to the courthouse on June 3rd and obtained my new, um, my survey, and it is newer than the one for the site-proposed property, for the proposed property. So, how can you tell me that I need to move my wood off my property? How can you remove stakes and run them over with heaven equipment? I invite every one of you to walk my property line and see those markers in the proximity of my property, and imagine yourself and your family there. I must add that the atmosphere of intimidation that surrounds this parcel, we've had letters on file from the applicant's lawyer with legal threats and untrue statements. As you see today, people who are opposed to it won't even talk. We have been labeled loud, obstructed, and bullies, all because we are catching about our way of life. On one occasion, after a meeting, a member of the Klein family, Brent Scott, not only once, but twice.
John.
I don't need a microphone, my voice will carry. My question's for you.
You can't hear him in the back, let us know.
You're wasting my time, sorry. My question to you folks is why do we need another campground here? Who's going to burden the tax dollars for paramedics, for fire, for police? Here's an example: There's an issue at Pineland where you need the police department there. Now you've got an issue down here at Klein's. Now you've got an issue at the Pettenwell Flowage. Who's going to say enough is enough? We are moving up here to get away from the racket. If I wanted to deal with a bunch of hoodlums, I'd stay living in Milwaukee. If I would have known this crap was going on, and as I said, the first minute I came to, I piped up and said, "Why would I want to put a $200,000 house here when I can go out the front door and listen to them rocking and rolling in Pineland? Oh wait, let's go out the back door." Now I'm listening to rocking, rap, and heavy metal over here. This is a quiet subdivision. I've been coming up here since I was probably 20 years old. I love it the way it is. There's been a lot of shady talk of what's going on and how everything's being handled. There's a lot of corruption. There's corruption on the board, all by hearsay. I don't know, I don't live up here yet, but I will be living up here, and I hope to meet every one of you. But I'm telling you, this is a bad idea. We don't need another campground, because look down the road, Rome is building one there too. They're also building 10 Airbnbs for $100,000 apiece. Why do we need one down here? It's right across from the church, right next to a cemetery! For Christ's sake, it's a cemetery! People die, people go there to worship. I'll tell you this, if I lived across the house, I'd be sitting there with a seagull cannon lighting that son of a bitch off all night long. Do we have a noise, or it's in this county, or in this village? No, we do not. So if you guys hear some cannons going off, that'll be me sitting on Highway C, lighting it off. It'll be a propane tank. No damage, no harm done. But I am moving up here to get away from all the corrupt, the noise, and all the bullshit that's going on down in Milwaukee.
I thought you liked your peace and quiet, so why would you start blowing shit off the road?
Because I don't want to go on, I'm going to go off of my back porch and listen to one rock and roll music, and go on the front porch and listen to another.
You're far enough down the road.
No, I'm not far enough down the road.
Let's go back to Milwaukee.
Why don't you give me my minutes? So, all I'm saying is that there's been a lot of corruption, there's been a lot of hearsay. I think that it should be investigated for the corruption on the board. I know some of you are new members, some of you are older members that are on the board. Nobody ever answered my question last January when I came in and said, "Why would I want to build a house here and have this down the road for me?" If I would have known that, with all honesty, I probably would have sold.
Good afternoon. I know most of you people don't want this campground, but let me talk about a few of the decent things and alternatives to what we have. So we have a relatively clear vision of the campground. We have expressed that vision, we brought it here in front of the board. I didn't go out, neither did my family go out, and spend the $20,000, $30,000 to build a beautiful map and everything like that for this place. No, I'm not going to do that at this point. We have promised you a nice civil campground. I guess the other issue that I'd like to discuss is recent elections. We had a member, the chair of the board, that was voted off, that was completely against the campground. We have a new member that I don't think has made up his mind on the campground. In my mind, that speaks volumes. There is a very vocal majority in this town that comes here and says they don't want the campground. The votes speak differently. This brings me to probably the final crucial point of what I want to say. We invested in this land thinking that we were going to build a campground. In fact, we were told that we could have it commercialized by Leo and Larry, and they would go through the process, and we took it upon ourselves to go through this. So we spent loads and loads of money buying the land, loads and loads of money permitting the land. And now we're at a point where this either goes through, or we look to sell to the land to the salvage company. We don't. It's lost money for us. That's where we stand. It is permitted through the state of Wisconsin right now for that.
Three minutes.
That's your three minutes.
No, it's not.
It isn't? Do I have a timer?
I don't want this to come as a threat, but my family cannot lose money on this venture. And I'm not trying to be an ass about it, and neither are we. We will build a nice campground if we are allowed to do so. She identified Rob Klein, part of the family wanting to build the campground.
All right, my name is Shelley Beck. I have lived in the township for 28 years. I married into the Beck family, so I am not truly a Beck, but I am part of the family. First and foremost, I would like to thank all members of the board and planning commission for your time dedicated to our town. I have been on several boards, and know it is not an easy task. Second, all town members, remember, this is a board meeting. We have a right to listen, observe, and speak when called upon. We do not have a right to speak out of turn, speak over another person, or to speak at all. We are lucky the board and commission allows us to speak. This can be taken away if we do not respect the rules put in place. To the commission and board, I urge you to take back control of your meetings by allowing time limits for speaking, and taking it away for town members who cannot follow the rules. I also want to ask any town member that does not follow the rules, be asked to leave the meeting. We are all grown-ups, and we must follow the rules, and the board must take control. You were elected to do what is best for the town and not allow chaos to happen at meetings. I wish to now speak about the campground rezon request. I know some people claim that the comprehensive plan needs to be followed. Here's my take on that. The plan is just that, a plan. Plans change and can happen at any time. I believe that when the plan was put in place, it was what the town needed at that time. The plan can change. I know five years ago, we planned on putting up a garage, and cancer happened, and that plan had to change. So five years later, we paid almost double what it would have cost us then. Same with the town. Bills are higher, maintenance costs more, and fixing a town road is more. My question to the commission is where are the funds to keep our town going to come from? I believe that by allowing a business such as a campground to come in, it will generate tax revenue for not only the town, but the county. The problem with Adams County is that we do not allow businesses to come in here and help with the burden of taxes. If you look at Pineland Campground, it generates almost $25,000 in property taxes a year, of which 4,200 goes to the town. Now double that with the proposed new campground. That would be almost $8,400 to the town. Now, some of you say there will be more emergency services and there will be more crime. I can tell you, I camp a lot all over the Midwest. Not once have I seen police called to a campground. People who camp do not camp to cause problems. Noise is never an issue, as every campground has quieted out, unlike our town. I can hear on any given night, squealing tires on CD and loud booms, for what I can only guess is tannorite being blown up. Those of you who are worried about hunting and wildlife, wildlife will return. Hunting, if you are worried about this, then for years you've been hunting on someone else's land, and now are mad because you are no longer able to trespass. And finally, I want to make it clear, the Beck's have nothing to do with the campground and do not stand to benefit from it either, other than the tax revenue gained to the town. Leo and Larry were approached about selling the land, and the price was right, so they sold. I have heard some say, "Well, I did not get anything out of it."
Joey.
Hi, Joey. I don't come in here with any kind of malice or anger or anything. I represent two parts of one family, the Bollmans and the Van Nans. My grandparents bought their property back in the 60s, and at this point right now, I'm just trying to preserve what was left of it. I learned to drive up here, I learned to fish up here, I learned to hunt up here, I learned how to forage up here, where I'm not talking a lot of things that I'm passing down to my children. The property is 1012, they're 1050 drive, which buds up against directly with the campground. I do worry about people coming over onto the property, where my children lean out, where getting to, and where grandkids are going to start coming in, and they should be able to be able to just go. That's what I did when I was a kid. I ended up on the Beck's side, wrong side of the property, getting chased by cows when I was a kid. You know, they do things like that. So, I hope that the preservation can happen. I'm not for the campground. I have family that is buried in the Bay Flat Cemetery. So this place holds a very near spot in the herd, and I'm just trying to save something. So like, I'm already fighting one fight with just family alone, and then to have all of this going on is kind of overwhelming. Again, I don't hold any malice, I, you know, the Beck's are, I've known the Beck a long time, around the, like, a long time, is what it is, but I really, really hope that you guys don't do this, because, again, all the same things that we're all talking about, the noise, law enforcement, wildlife, it's a lot of different things, and I really hope you guys are listening on that, and, you know, seeing both sides of it. I really hope you guys will know. I've been up here for the first time in six months since Steve passed away, and to see all the signs going down, hierarchy was kind of crazy. Vote no, vote no, vote no, and then there's one, vote yes. So, I hope you guys will listen. That's all I got.
Kelly.
Hi, I'm Leo's daughter. I have no ill will towards Klein's. I live, I'm right next door to somewhere the campground's being built. I prefer he not build a campground there, I prefer he put houses there. I think you guys would get more money out of taxes. So, really all I've got to say.
Hi, my name is Matt. I'm against the rezon. The question I have for you guys, as a PC member, would you like a campground behind your house or across the street from you, because I know your family has plenty of property? Pam, I really can't ask you the question, because you bought your property knowing the campground was behind the property when you bought it. Billy, would you like a campground behind your house? I know you were in a quiet subdivision. Same goes for you, Mike. Would you like it behind your house in the quiet subdivision you're in? Joe, would you like it behind your house? It's all questions we have for you guys. Think about, think of it as if it was in your guys' backyards. Is that something you guys want? It's all questions we would like you guys to think on your part. Think of it as if you were in our shoes. I'm asking about the kindness of our hearts. Think if you were in our shoes, and how we're thinking, and how we feel about it.
Brandon.
I'm good.
Steve.
Good evening, everyone. My property is Kenny Corner, across the street from the proposed campground. I'm against the rezoning of that property from R2 to commercial. And the big thing, we hear, you know, there's an estimated $8,400 of tax money to kind of cover the town. Is that really worth changing the entire landscape of this area? Because once you go forward and do it, you can't undo it. And I personally, like many of you, searched for my property for a year and a half before I finally found what I believe to be my piece of paradise. I've owned it for eight or nine years now, fighting every tar here, and I hope that paradise doesn't change. Thank you.
Margaret.
Hello. First, I'd like to say my husband and I, I cannot afford, respectfully submit our opposition to the rezon of the Klein property from R2 residential to C1 commercial district for the third time. The same reasons to object still apply for the three-peat application. This property plots directly up to our back 40 acres. We are hunters and outdoor people. We enjoy the forest, wildlife, and serenity of our property, and allowing commercial rezon adjacent to us will not only devalue our property, but will infringe on the enjoyment of our property. But even more than that, this rezon goes against the 10-year comprehensive plans for the Town of Big Flats. And yes, I did hear that plans are made to be changed, but also, this came up about two months after, after, two months at the first application, after that plan was signed. The same plan that was completed September 2023 at a cost of $13,000 to the taxpayers in two years of input. That same plan that was partially based on a survey of the residents. The same plan, to paraphrase, states, "Its purpose is to preserve the rural nature of Big Flats along with our most valuable resources, the woods, water, and wildlife, and rural lifestyle." Throughout the plan, under goals, objectives, and policies under each section, it says things like, "Plan and develop land uses that preserve the rural community. Prevent new development from negatively impacting the natural environment or existing property." That's on page 72 of the plan. "Protecting natural areas, including woodlands, wildlife habitats, ponds, woodlands, open areas, and groundwater resources. Ensure that all new development in the town is compatible with surrounding uses and is not negatively impact environmental resources or adjoining properties." That's on page 26. Another quote, "The town's strength for attracting and retaining residential development is its rural atmosphere. Commercial and industrial growth are not necessarily desired uses in the town, as they often compete with the natural setting." That's on page 59. And in the plan, under zoning ordinances, ordinance, and map, it states, "The establishment of zoning districts and the zoning map indicates where specific types of development can and should be located." It plainly shows now existing, it's all residential, and in the future, they still have it residential. All commercial is planned for Highway 13, basically.
I'll give her my three minutes. I'll give her my three minutes.
Can I finish reading it if you want to?
Let her finish. She can have my three minutes.
We're not sharing minutes, I'm sorry. Mark, Ken, do you want to talk?
Just got them talking. I'm against this campground, and you would be too. Klein's went through the property, half his road that he went through, splitters and trees all over. He's got a pile of wood that's starting half-high. He put no trespassing signs on my trees facing my way, saying, "No trespassing" on my trees. And, yeah, laugh all you want, but believe me, it, it... I quit, because a lot of smart people and me said good things, and you have to really listen good to them. My wife said, "To really judge what's going on."
Jim.
Hi, Jim. I don't even want to be here, but I got dragged into this. I look around here, I don't know hardly anybody. One or two people. It's ridiculous. My family bought land here in 1962. If they would have stayed with that program that they had in 1962, none of you people would be here, because you had to have 40-acre minimums. So there would be no two acres, there would be no four acres, there would be no 10-acre lots. Times change. You have to change with the times a little bit. I am for the campground. Why am I for the campground? Because I looked at the three options. Are we going to put houses there? We going to put a recycling center that runs 24 hours a day and crushes cars and has more traffic? Or are we going to have a campground? I think it's beneficial to the community. I understand some people don't like it, but what really irritates me is when I'm out and about, and people I don't even know are bothering me and harassing me because I'm for the campground. And I've seen them harass other people. Then I have people tell me they're afraid to come to these meetings. They're for the campground, but they're afraid to come because they get harassed. I think this is ridiculous. We got to come up with something better than this. We're all better than this, to sit here and bicker, and take it out to the community, and fight them out there, and all of the other BS that's going on.
My statement will be simple. We support the adjacent property owners' insistence on not approving the campground. It doesn't affect me personally, however, it's a distance away, but you imagine now, they have devalued property, they have property that is going to be hard to sell because it's next to a campground, and if they stay there, they have to put up with the nuisance of the campground. So, we signed a petition to completely support them. I think it's... I think it's inherently unfair to allow a commercial, regardless of previous use, to regard a commercial use of a piece of property in our residential area. Plain and simple.
All right, Carrie. I'm going to have to talk fast. I just want to say how grateful I am to have met such wonderful and hardworking members of our community. I have met neighbors who have been here for many, many, many years. Those who have been here for a shorter period of time. Those that have recently retired here and those who can't wait to retire here. I've met many people close to the proposed site and just as many on the outskirts of town. It has been truly humbling to me to hear people say that they are opposed, that they have our back because they would not want this in their backyard. I want to thank those who have worked countless hours, um, getting petitions signed, those that have stood together by putting signs up. And I want to thank everyone who reached out and signed our petition. That said, I'd like to announce that last night we submitted two hundred and forty-four signatures of people opposed to this campground. And we received thirteen more today for a total of two hundred and fifty-seven signatures. I challenge the other side to come close to that number. Lastly, I just want to say respectfully, I say no to rezoning. Thank you. Jeff.
Hey, as most of you know, I'm Jeff Sparadio. Um, wasn't sure what I was going to say today. Um, there were a lot of great comments. Um, and just again, just to kind of piggyback off my wife, we were very humble to people that supported the residents that actually surround it. We do have a little bit of a buffer zone. Um, but we wouldn't want this in our backyard. Um, I hope that the quality of signatures we got speaks volumes on what the residents are looking for. It kind of coincides also with the survey that you sent out, the comprehensive plan. People want a quiet residential neighborhood in this area. Um, we don't want it to be like Chicago. We want it to be quiet and peaceful and just that's about it. Um, so it's really hard to say again, thank you, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Cole, the student. I really don't have any major favor or against a campground. However, um, I've been looking at the map from Sand Valley and what they seem to be proposing. And I'm just kind of wondering, is that actually going to be a campground? Or are we going to be looking at a gated, really down the line? Like in two twenty-six, one hundred and sixty-six? And that's something that I think we should all be looking at. Now, is it going to be under the hearing with that? Or this what? And also, on paper and those elements, what about, um, Rome? Do we want to be annexed by Rome? Do you know what being annexed by another town is? Do you? Okay, how many of you know what being annexed by another town?
Well, I think it's taking over.
Not all of them. It kind of means your taxes are going to go up to your property taxes. Is one of them. Do you want that to happen? Because right now, we don't have anything here. So I'm just giving you something. And I, for one, I don't like the way that all this has gone down. The corruption, the dividing of immunity. It's terrible. And Mr. Klein, you knew that this was not a commercial property that you were buying.
I got a pretty loud voice. I'm on that side of Highway thirteen and I just got a couple of questions for the board. Um, somebody said approximately eighty-four hundred dollars will be coming into the town for revenue. Uh, campgrounds are traditionally not assessed or taxed the way those of us in residential are. So our residential money would probably equate more than that. Um, the town would have nothing to do with snow removal or probably garbage because they, if they're in Pineland, they'll have their own garbage pickup. So that leaves us just with fire and, uh, placed by these guys. Um, as for additional money that comes into the town, the levy for this township is based, how should I put this? Every year, the state determines how much you can increase your levy from last year unless you have a vote by the constituents. So if this eighty-four hundred dollars is coming into the township, that's probably what about? How much does it cost for a mile of road now? Lots of money, lots of money. Yeah. So I, I don't think it's going to maybe even do a, not even a quarter of a mile if you're going to look at something to do with highways or whatever. Um, let's see, what else is? Basically, um, now the whole, the, everything's opened up for ETVs. They rock them down the road, it's like they own it. So it, it's the noise factor. But I sort of have to sit on the fence here about this, but I'm, I'm not sure how it's going to be monetarily efficient for the town to put something of this nature in. Now, I'm not against the clients or anything of that nature. But I, I just can't figure out how the monetary money is going to enhance the town and, and go from there. So I would think that more housing would generate more tax revenue if that's what they're looking at. But, uh, as I say, my piece is that I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the financial portion of having, have the background that I have and knowing how the budget is prepared and how other treasures for other things are going on. If somebody could explain that to me, that's, that makes it understandable. Uh, I, I guess I could go. I do think that the clients will probably try to control, uh, the noise. But that's going to be a lot of traffic in and out of there. They only have one way in and one way out, and that's on Highway C. I'm not sure where she's coming from. Because in order to be next to another town, we'd have to be in really dire straits. I mean, New County didn't even want Rome, so I don't know why Rome would want us. I've always looked upon Rome as our subdivision. But anyway, that, that's my take on it. I, I, I just think that we should look at it and figure out what's going on.
Thank you. Jade.
Okay, Jade Yildin. Nancy.
Okay, Yildin. Hi, I don't think I need the mic. I'm pretty loud, as a lot of you already know. So when we first came up here, we came because my brother's, my husband's brother has medical problems and he's been in Arrowhead since the seventies camping and then built a home. So we wanted to be next to him, we take him to the doctors and things. We looked at Rome and we didn't want to be in Rome. We could see where Rome was going, we could see the streetlights and, and the infrastructure. And we could see they wanted to build, even Arrowhead, half acre acre lots. We heard that Big Flats was the armpit of Adams County. And we said, that sounds like us. That sounds like low taxes and that sounds like country living. And here we are for ten years. We were lucky enough to find an existing house. It's three miles down the road from Pineland. Hey, they were there, they are there. One of the best things that's come out of this whole thing is I did go out and try to get people to sign a petition. And I met my wonderful neighbors, who I see a couple of them in here, who are on Big Horn. And every person on Big Horn between my place at Eighth Drive and Pineland at thirteen, that I, that I knocked on their door. And that's everybody, really, all of you, signed it. So we know what it is to live down the road from a campground, but it was already there. So that said, I did want to say I recognize what Margaret said right out of the thirteen thousand dollar planning, comprehensive plan that we had put together. I also wanted to mention from that, on page sixty-nine and seventy, they have a chart that shows, based on our population, how many acres we need of commercial land right up till twenty forty. And that number is seven. Seven acres of commercial property. We need one hundred and seventy-four acres of residential. We have a need for housing, every place does. Anyway, a good suggestion, and I know you didn't want to take the time, sir, Robert, to, um, drop a plan, but I almost think that's part of the requirement for your, um, yeah, I think it has to be to spec and all, but I'm not sure. But I think a good suggestion might be ten seven acre plots. That's in keeping with the surrounding community. Somebody can do the math and the taxes. If people put in five hundred thousand dollar houses, it's going to be about the same, I think.
Yeah, see what change did you save?
Sixty-nine and seventy shows a chart. Yeah, so we need seven acres of commercial property for our, based on our population, not seventy in one project. And again, it was very nice to meet my neighbors, for everybody to come together. And just the fact that this has caused so much division should be a big red flag that it's maybe not the best idea. And Mr. Klein, both you Mr. Kleins, I guess, you have the Mr. Klein too. I'm sorry if the vex misled you. I mean, obviously, you just admitted they did. He was on the board too, so, yeah. That's too bad, I do feel for you, but I think you'll get your money back. It's a hot market here because of Sand Valley, as you know.
I have one more person who signed up, but I don't have a last name or address. Kent, are you willing to sign up? I need your, I need your name and address.
Yep, I, I need your name.
I just want to say.
No, hold on, you need to sign in order to speak. That's, that's how it is, sorry. It's right there, who's signing? We're allowing you to speak, you just need to sign in. My goodness.
All right, so, uh, propose a public hearing. So we'll do call the regular meeting to order. Go call, yeah, Mike. Joe.
Yep.
Joe. Pam.
Here.
We had a chance to review the minutes. Sorry, we're going to change the agenda. And motions, bill of seven, all in favor. All right, so then, um, we had a chance to review the figures. I didn't know.
You guys be quiet so I can hear, please, thank you.
On the second page, uh, where it said it's going to be a human of Korea and I tried to clarify her desire is actually, we were being back forty-nine, asked her to call me. So when we asked her to call, to clarify her desire. And then oh, here, sorry. Um, Carrie, question, if any changes would be ported on and I think it'd be posted on.
What?
A typo.
Being posted on the website. And it's a typo, tissue.
You can port it, teleport it.
So did anyone have anything else on the minutes? Only makes a motion to accept the proposed changes.
I'll second it.
Show the second, all in favor.
All right.
So PC members discuss and hold on request. I'm Robert in Chris Point.
Excuse me, Wendy. Could you speak up a little bit or something, it's hard to hear.
Yeah, when I turn my head, I'm also not able to speak fully in the microphone. So PC members, discuss and hold on request. Any questions that anybody has? That didn't get addressed prior. That didn't get addressed during the public hearing. Any, any comments anyone wants to make?
It, it seems to me that the property tax issue wasn't addressed.
Oh, can I address that?
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Joe, did you have a question? So I have this map up here and I just wanted people to know that in red is proposed future or current, um, commercial area. And all around those commercial areas is yellow except for some blue, which is governmental or public institutional. Yellow is residential, R1. The area that we're looking at, I'll leave it right here. So it's on Con Road C and it's in green. And so that's the area that is what we're talking about. Um, but one can see that on our current zoning map, it's not unheard of, it's in fact the norm for smaller lots to be around commercial.
On thirteen.
True, on thirteen. However, if you look at the comprehensive plan, one of the goals under economic development is to encourage development to locate adjacent to come or skate highways. It's on the comprehensive plan under economic development. Under our zoning district, C1, permitted uses, there's like hotels, stores. Campground is listed as a business for development in our community. And this is zoning, this is in our zoning ordinance.
Oh, what page in the comprehensive plan?
It's on the zoning ordinance.
Oh, oh, okay.
So taxes. So Terry and I were looking at taxes. Uh, we were presented with, um, parcel taxes for twenty twenty-three and what people are paying for their property taxes. So we looked at the adjoining properties, which is on this area here. And so the taxes that are paid by, there's twenty-five adjoining properties. Terry said to me that that is not what town receives. So we went through and looked at each of these. And this handwritten list is what the town of Big Flats receives for these twenty-five property owners. So in total for twenty twenty-four, the town received five thousand seven hundred forty dollars and eight cents for these twenty-five parcels. You could see that some people have a higher tax rate because they probably have a house and other buildings and whatnot. And some of it may be vacant land with no buildings on it. Then we also looked at what the current taxes were. Then we also looked at what the current taxes were at the time for the two parcels that are in question now. And with the scrapyard and just vacant land, the town received eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. We checked out what Pineland Campground was paying at the time. And so they paid to the town, the town received three thousand, two hundred, seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. So I know people are asking, well, what if we divide this into the lots? What would the tax benefit be? I just made an estimate and said, okay, what if we had twelve lots? And the town receives four hundred dollars, which in looking at the twenty-five lots here is really kind of high, but not overly volatile, depending on what people put on those properties. So then we see, you know, the town could receive, if everyone built something on that land, forty-eight hundred. So then I called the tax assessor because people are asking, what would the benefit be to the town? And the tax assessor told me that by far, campground would bring more revenue to the town than residential or a scrapyard. That campgrounds hold their value, they sell for usually higher than what they were purchased. And that the revenue to the town would be greater.
Can I comment?
Much greater.
I just wanted to just quick matter because the math you're showing up there is not what I can do here. I know that we pay thirteen hundred dollars a year for ten acres. And if you do, you divide it up, that's ninety-one hundred dollars for the seventy acres if you put just a camper on there.
Well, I'm saying, no, that I'm looking at eight acres right here.
I, I got my taxes, I paid my taxes today.
But that's not what we get. But that's not what the town is giving.
That's...
So I'm looking at what the town is giving.
The math doesn't matter.
Okay, no, I'm not gonna...
Thirteen times.
We, we did, we did the math according to what the record you wrote.
Okay, well...
So what else are people bringing up? People brought up traffic, trespassing, noise, crime. All those things were addressed in previous meetings. We did address the road and traffic issues and talked about how it was addressed in the comprehensive plan. We talked about trespassing and how, you know, most of the time I had talked with the sheriff, you know, these issues are not something that they address in campgrounds.
Can you address my specific?
No, not during a, not during a meeting.
Well, that's, she's addressing things we brought up, I wanna...
I am addressing things you brought up. I listened to you, so I listened because...
Right.
So you can let me, if you would like. So I did, I did address concerns. I did check with the tax assessor. I did talk to the sheriff's department. I did talk to the fire department. All of those things were addressed in previous meetings.
Can you specifically address the amount of acreage?
You may not agree with the answers, but the answers are correct.
Right, but can you address it?
Your opinion is it? Stop or you will be asked to leave.
I would like this specific thing addressed, all right? Seven acres.
Name is adjourned.
Oh, good, well, then they can't vote anyway. I don't know if this is good or bad. Sorry, people, I just thought that was a valid concern that she, I said...
But it's a closed meeting.
It's closed.
Once, once open comment is closed, it's closed. You're supposed to shut your mouth.
There he is. Oh, go.
There he is, a closed meeting.
They were waiting for it.
Exactly, that's closed.
Sorry about that.
Well, it just means we'll have to do it again. More time.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh my God, is Nancy over there? You gotta go get Nancy out of there. She's in trouble. Look at the clients.
Hi.
I said, I'm sorry, they lied to you. Oh, they didn't lie to you. I said, you just told us they lied to you. They told you it was commercial. Oh, they'd be able to get it.
All right, let's go. Ready?
Yeah, let's go.
Let's go.